Good evening. The Lindbergh School's Board of Education meeting 1554 is now called to order. Item 2.0, additions, deletions, corrections. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
All right. We'll move on to 3.0, approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the -- excuse me, approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Kathy?
Second.
Second by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes 7-0. At this time, I would like to invite our Truman Middle School students, Maybel and Tino, to come forward and help lead us in the pledge.
Come up here and face the flag or you can face the audience. Come on up here. And I'm gonna bite you. All right, here we go.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, we are recognizing our Truman Middle School staff and students. If Dr. Strutman, if you'd like to come forward with your presentations.
There we go. Thanks, Colin. Thanks for allowing me to be here tonight to talk about Truman Middle School. Really excited. If I could have my two awesome students, Tino Lopez and Maybel Bora, join me. So, these two students are eighth graders for Truman Middle School and have just been amazing for us for three years. And so, I want to share a couple of amazing things about them. A lot of these words are from their teachers. I didn't want their perspective since they're in the classroom with them every day. So, I'm gonna start with Maybel. Maybel is a voice for students. She's respectful, reliable, she's an engaged learner, she's a true leader, she's collaborative with her peers and her teachers, always advocating for doing what is best for students in the classroom with her. Makes everyone feel comfortable, which is really important, as you know, as part of a school. So, she makes other students feel welcome in the classroom and feels -- makes their voices feel heard because she's also a voice for students. She brings out the best in others, which is such a great quality that will be wonderful for her moving forward when she moves on to high school. She's an extremely hard worker and just a self-advocate for herself as well. So, Maybel Bora.
Wrong one, sorry, Maybel. We have a certificate recognizing you as student of the month, so there's that. Congratulations. And then we have, you never have enough Lindbergh swag, right? T-shirt as well. If that doesn't fit you, let us know. We'll get you one. It will fit you, so we're gonna take a quick picture. Oh, we want to shoot over the back of the way.
For our second student is another eighth grader, Tino Lopez. As you can tell, Tino has an awesome smile. He has that smile on his face permanently, and I'm not kidding. Tino strives for excellence, always leads by example. He also is an extremely hard worker. You sense the pattern here. Takes initiative, has assumed leadership roles at Truman, well-rounded and kind, also wonderful qualities as a person, but also will translate well to being a student as well. He's very humble, and by humble, I mean like very humble. You almost have to pull out of him his great qualities because he's so nice. Positive and calm, self-reliant, just always doing the right thing. So, Tino, thank you. And, Tino Lopez.
All right. Tino, congratulations. We have a certificate recognizing you as student of the month, and we also have a nice t-shirt for you as well. So, congratulations. All right. Let's take a quick picture here. We have -- all right.
Next, we're gonna recognize our 2021 Support Staff Person of the Year, Ms. Kelly Camrud. So, Kelly is our secretary for us in the very front office. She greets guests on a regular basis. You might have seen her doing that in our building. She's been super patient this year as we had construction on our front entrance, and she has been very flexible, to say the least, and is always -- always does a great job, though, of making sure our guests are welcome. So, on top of that, she's also a very kind person. She's caring, she's funny, she's got a great personality, which is really important when you're working in a middle school office. You have to love what you're doing and love being around people, and she loves all of those things. She's very patient with our students, which is also really important. She's a welcome face to parents. Overall, student-centered, though, and hardworking. There's never something we don't put on her plate that she doesn't do very well at and is willing to do. So, those are also great things. She wears many hats. She's always like helping in the office. As you know, during these last couple of years, we've had to be flexible and help each other. She's been right on top of all that. Most importantly, though, relationships are a top priority for her, and that is something that we all value and we love to be around. So, we're amazingly fortunate to have her on our team at Truman Middle School, so Ms. Kelly Camrud. It's the nicest thing I've ever said, but no.
I know. Kelly, we have a certificate recognizing you as Support Staff Person of the Year and a $25 gift certificate to the online store, so you can pick what Lindbergh swag you want. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Make sure to tell everybody tomorrow I said nice things about you. All right. All right. Next up, we'll have our 2021 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Ann Bergio. So, Ann is a veteran teacher at Truman. That is not saying that she's of any age, but she is a veteran teacher, which doesn't take a lot anymore because we have a lot of young teachers. But Ann and I have worked together in many roles in the district, and she has been successful with every single one of them, partly because of her level of collaborativeness. She is always willing to work with others, no matter what team she's on, no matter what conversation she's in. Collaboration is important to her and is something we value greatly at Truman. She's also very creative, so one of her primary roles is teaching students. And as part of teaching students, being creative and trying new things in the classroom is probably one of the most important things you can possibly do to keep students engaged, and she does very well at that as well. She's also fearless. She's willing to jump in and try anything. I know she's been integral in our iPad rollout and implementation in the classroom. She's an engaged learner herself. She's always looking to grow as a teacher and become better herself, which also translates to her to her students in the classroom. She's also very reflective, which I think is the number-one characteristic of a quality teacher. Willing to take feedback, always willing to make change, and just transform what's going on in the classroom for her and her students. And just an overall passion for teaching. She is definitely a passionate person. If you've been around Ann, it's contagious. She loves working with colleagues and all of those wonderful things that we get to do at middle school. And she's also a super patient person. So, she works in seventh grade with social studies this year. So, she has been awesome. So, thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Ann, congratulations. And here is a certificate recognizing you as Truman Teacher of the Year and also a $25 certificate. Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations to our special guest from Truman tonight, and thank you for coming and, you know, sharing your evening with us. We will take a few minutes if you'd like to leave. You are more than welcome to stay for the business portion of our meeting, but you don't have to.
Run, run. Oh, my gosh. It feels like a normal board meeting.
We have two consent resolutions this evening, Teachers of the Year and Support Persons of the Year. Do I have a motion to approve the Teachers of the Year and Support Staff Persons of the Year consent resolutions as presented?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
One?
Second.
All right. Motion by Megan, second by Kristi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Passes 7-0. We will move on to 6.0, citizen communication regarding agenda items. I believe we do not have any agenda items. All right.
Yep.
Go back. So, turn the page. We'll move to 7.0, communications. 7.01, calendar of events, Board Secretary, Ms. Vetter.
Yes, hello. Okay. I'm sure all of us are aware that tomorrow is the last day of school. Please remember it is a half-day, so check with your elementary's noon. I'm not, I don't, I know elementary's noon because I have an elementary school kid. So, make sure that you don't leave your kid there all day unless you want to. District offices are closed on May 30th for Memorial Day. May 31st is Lindbergh High School's graduation, which is very exciting. Beginning Friday, June 10th, all district offices will be closed on Fridays through the end of July. June 14th, there is a Finance Board Advisory Meeting, and then we are back here for our regular Board of Education meeting on Thursday, June 16th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll go to 7.02, report of meetings. Does anyone have any state or parent group or other meetings to report about? I know a few of us did go to the National Honor Society induction at the high school earlier this month, so that was nice to kind of be back in person for some of those events this spring. All right.
I also went to the Students at the High School put on a diversity event, and that was really nice, and I was very appreciative of the students' effort to do that and thought it was great that they felt comfortable to do that, and they showed great maturity when there were some difficult questions put to them. So, I think the students did a great job with that.
Thank you for sharing. And then 7.03, announcements. There are none this month. We'll move to 7.04, review of upcoming Board of Education meeting agendas, and that is back to Ms. Vetter.
Thank you. So, June 16th, we'll be back here at 7:00 PM. The tentative agenda items include just our regular business items like human resources and financial reports, a second reading of the district's CSIP plan, and any policies which will be seeking approval, the transportation annual contract escalation and SFE's contract renewal, as well as meal prices and facility use rates for the '22-'23 school year, and lastly, program evaluations of career technical education and food service. So, a lot, a lot ahead of us.
Thank you. We have no Board of Education member appointments this evening, and we will now watch our May MSBA report.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of May. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at cybersecurity issues facing our schools. Cyber attacks on schools in Missouri and throughout the nation are on the increase. They include ransomware, data breaches, and what's known as denial of service when cyber attackers flood a school district's network with messages that can crash a school district's technology system. It's a serious problem for school districts that are increasingly dependent on technology for teaching, learning, and administrative functions. Klaus Meyer is an Education Safety Coordinator for MSBA's Education Safety, and he says school districts are often targets for cyber attacks because of the large amount of data they store. He adds, "It's critical for school district technology staff to keep current on cybersecurity threats that are becoming more sophisticated."
These systems are advancing so fast, and the attackers are a step one. They need to be updated on everything and well-educated in that area. So, commitment and investment and focus on that cybersecurity infrastructure is important, is vital to keeping these safe.
Klaus Meyer says cybersecurity should be part of a school district's overall school safety plan.
Because your cybersecurity element is very much a part of your emergency operation plan, and so we offer a tool to help develop those plans, but there's also an annex on that cybersecurity element that would build that, those procedures to follow in terms of protecting, you know, both preventing and responding to a cyber attack.
You can contact MSBA's Center for Education Safety for resources related to cybersecurity and many other school safety issues. Missouri is home to two active-duty military bases, Whiteman Air Force Base near Nobnoster and Fort Leonard Wood near Waynesville. Educating the children of the many military families stationed at those bases poses some unique challenges, including frequent moves as well as deployments. First Lady Jill Biden and U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona visited Whiteman Air Force Base and the Nobnoster School District in April, designated as the month of the military child. Cardona told an audience, including students of military families, they face challenges different from other students, and praised school districts such as Nobnoster for providing them with support they need to be successful in school.
As Americans, we allow the sacrifice of our military families to sacrifice the quality of education available to their children. I'm honored to be here with you, recognizing month of the military child, and I'm humbled and inspired by your work, day in and day out.
A military child can expect to move six to nine times between kindergarten and the end of high school. MSBA's Igniting Great Ideas Summit is set for June 10th through 12th in St. Charles. This event features a wide range of topics and speakers related to school board leadership and current issues facing boards of education. We'll also be holding our June Delegate Assembly at the summit, when delegates will be electing statewide officers for the coming year. Every MSBA member board is entitled to have at least one voting delegate at the delegate assembly, and we urge your school board to be represented at this important meeting. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office posted on the MSBA website. Registration information on the Igniting Great Ideas Summit is posted on the MSBA website. If your school district is interested in sharing some of your outstanding programs and practices with other school districts in the state, now's the time to submit a proposal to present at the 2022 MSBA Annual Conference, to be held November 3rd through 6th in Kansas City. Concurrent sessions will be held on Friday, November 4th, and Saturday, November 5th. The deadline for submitting a proposal to present at the 2022 Annual Conference is Friday, May 27th. Check the MSBA website for more details. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Thank you, Colin. Our cabinet updates, we will start with Dr. Sparks for your three committees.
I actually only have one tonight. Since we are closing out the end of the school year, only Teaching and Learning has met since our last board meeting. And at that meeting, we talked about our task force work, looking at how we can expand world languages. So, we had a task force that met over the course of the semester and really looked at the research around world language acquisition, the benefits for students, the opportunities for what we could do to expand opportunities for students in elementary school, as well as additional languages we could potentially offer as students are in secondary programs. So, we shared with the Teaching and Learning Board Advisory what those recommendations were and got some additional feedback. We still have a significant amount of work to do in terms of coordinating the ideas that have come from that task force, but got some additional feedback and ideas from the board advisory as well.
Thank you. And Dr. McKinney for HR?
We met this month and talked about the personnel report for the month. We also talked about hiring season, and that's about complete for us, which is great news.
Thank you. And we have one more special report this evening for item 8.02, Student Board of Education Members. So, back to Dr. McKinney.
Okay. It was, the idea was brought forward by Dr. Lake and board members about a student representative to the Board of Education. And if you can go to the next slide, please. The why behind this really is to enhance student voice and representation in district governance. So, we studied some other districts that are doing this already, particularly Clayton School District, very helpful in providing us access to students that are represented on their board, and we got to get some ideas of how this worked. So, tonight, really, what I'm presenting to you is a sketch of what this could look like. We want your input. This is one of the things we talked about in our advisory that I failed to mention just a second ago, but it's a sketch of what it could look like. Certainly, we want to get your input, and I know you'll share that with Dr. Lake, and we can move forward with this, this opportunity if the board chooses to do so. So, how it's done generally is an eligible junior and senior complete an application process. In the first year, a senior would be appointed to represent students on the board, and the junior would be appointed as the representative-elect, and that way, you've always got somebody in the pipeline. The junior would attend meetings and sit out in the audience and observe the process, have discussions with the senior member, and really learn about the process through that first year. Then, the next year, they would rise to the seat on the board, and a new junior member-elect would be, would be selected by the selection committee. Next slide, please. Generally, the role of these, of these students when they sit on the board is to sit on the, at the board table, sit at the dais, actively participate in the public meetings, attend all the meetings, just like the Board of Education does, represent the student body and provide that student lens, that student perspective, actively engage with the board and the superintendent on topics important to the student body, and work with the board president and superintendent to add items to the agenda that students may be, may be focused on and want discussed by the Board of Education. Next slide, please. Some eligibility ideas. Must be a rising junior or senior, obviously. We talked about that. Must be available to attend all board meetings and workshops. That's a big commitment. As we all know, sitting around this dais, that's a big commitment, and students are busy. Our juniors and seniors do a lot of stuff, so it's somebody that can make that commitment. They're able to. They, at the time, should also serve on a board advisory committee, so another commitment, but also engages that student. Prior student leadership would be preferred, something that you want to see, that they've engaged in some kind of leadership, either at the student level or at the district level. An application process that included an essay stating reasons for seeking the seat, as well as some open-ended questions that the selection committee would come up, come up with. They would also participate in an interview with the selection committee. Typically, we've noticed the selection committees are the superintendent, maybe another cabinet member, and members of the Board of Education. Finally, they would need some endorsement or recommendation from their principal or another educator that they've had experience with in their, in their student life. So, short and sweet presentation. Those are, again, a sketch of how it could look. I think it's a really neat opportunity. The people at Clayton were very helpful, and the students on the board at Clayton wrote me an email and said, "As soon as you guys get this going, give us their names, and we want to meet with them, and we want to start to collaborate." So, pretty neat, pretty neat stuff. So, happy to get your input as we move down the road with this, but I wanted to give you kind of an introductory idea of what it could look like. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm curious, do you have kind of a proposed timeline of when, if we decide to move forward with this, we'd like to seek applications?
Yeah. That's, that's really up to Dr. Lake and the board, but I think we're talking about this over the summer. We would get this going and possibly have this, yeah, please?
August would probably be the first meeting, so we would take in probably the month of July, select to do some training with, with both of the students, and then that August board meeting would be their first official board meeting.
And we've, we've got a pretty good, you know, again, sketch of what an application would look like, some sample questions, so we could move forward pretty quickly if we went with the process as I've presented tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, just tying those two things together, like you said, the Clayton people, and I know there's other districts in St. Louis County that do this, too, and then looking at like the ignite, you know, new ideas and stuff, just to see if there is any PD like that for the student members, and something if MSBA does anything with that?
Absolutely.
So, it's just a curious question, doesn't?
So, have this, have the students been, like, given any of this information yet?
No.
Until you guys sign off on it. So, then, once we kind of finalize it, so we wanted to present it to you tonight as a draft. Obviously, in our follow-up debriefs after this meeting, we can have some conversations. We can kind of get things finalized, and then we'll push it out to the students in July at some point.
And how will that communication be done? I'm just thinking about like summer schedules and making sure we're reaching everyone.
Right, yeah. It would have to be, it would have to be done through, through, I think, email, and Beth would help us with that certainly, but...
Can we push it till September or just get garnished?
We could do September if we wanted to wait in, when the kids are back in, and then do it in August and start it in September.
That might be a better way to make sure everybody learns about it.
Sure. Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things I didn't note in here, but I can look and see what other districts do with their timeline as well, if they start it.
Well, and what we could do then, once we get the cadence of it, we could select that incoming junior before school is out. So, you know, this first year, so then, it could start in August, but maybe this first year, it's going to be a little, maybe a month shorter term for, for that person, so that senior.
I was thinking, too, Brian, like the MSBA delegate and alternate, we kind of, if I can't go, then Megan can go, then maybe the junior and senior can kind of do a little bit of switching.
Yeah.
Because parents will plan vacation, and one may or may not be able to be here over the summer months.
And, yeah, and great experience, too.
And I've seen, in my experience, there's also been some students that join the board then for the graduation ceremony, too, in a way, and have a small part of that.
Oh, fun. Good idea, though. Love it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
9.0, action items by consent. We have action items by consent, 9.01 to 9.10. Would anyone like to remove any of these items for individual consideration? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9.10? Motion by Julia?
Second.
Second by Megan, I think. Is it you?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, any discussion?
I do. Do we know, did the student fees go up? Did it increase? Because what we see is what we're gonna charge, but not what it...
They actually went down. We've done some work over the course of this year to pull things off of the student fees and to embed them within curricular costs, so universally, they've gone down in those areas.
Okay, great. That's good to know.
Anything else? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I am abstaining.
All right. So, motion passes 6-0 with one abstention. There are no individual action items this evening, so we will move to 11.0, reports. For the record, 11.01, we have two for the record reports this evening, the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook and the CSIP First Reading. You should review these reports and contact cabinet members with any questions. They will be back, as Megan said, next month. 11.02, other reports. We do have one, 11.0201, Career and Technical Education in Lindbergh, and that will be presented by Dr. Sparks and Dr. Zagora.
In truth, really, Dr. Zagora. So, I welcome our Executive Director of Secondary Education to talk about what career and technical education in Lindbergh currently looks like.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to be here and share kind of a longitudinal view of a lot of action and growth that we've seen in career and technical education over the last few years, and really to celebrate the work that our amazing teachers and our students are doing in these areas. Next slide, please. So, I want to start with an overview. Anytime that I meet with any of our groups, whether it's our Career Advisory Council or teacher groups in professional learning, I like to make very clear what our purpose is when it comes to career and technical education. is when it comes to career and technical education, because really, this is for all of our students. This is not traditional vocational ed. This is not for our non-college-bound students. This is for all kids, to prepare them for whatever their careers ultimately may be. Next slide, please. So I like to start with this image, because I think, especially for, you know, even for us as adults, we probably felt this way when we were young and as students. And I know for myself as an educator, I've always been an educator, and so I know my own view of the world of work is probably somewhat limited. And when we think about our students and what they think their future possibilities are, they really start with the people they know. So the people in their own families and their friends, and that's the world of work that they know. And their perceptions of those worlds of work may depend on whether the person they know likes doing that job, or, you know, does it look appealing. And then, a little bit more broadly, what do they see in media? What do they see in society? And we know that those are not always the most equitable representations of what work can look like for our students. And then, much bigger than that is the whole universe of careers that they've never heard of. They don't know that they exist. They don't know what their path would be to get to them, or if they may like them. And so we've focused a lot of our work in career and technical education in that career awareness and exposure area first, and then also a lot of the soft skills work, which I'll talk about on the next slide. So go ahead and click to that one. So this comes out of the State of the St. Louis Workforce Report. St. Louis Community College puts this report out annually, and it gives us a lot of really good data about what employers in our region are saying. And in their 2021 report, the top concern for employers is attracting and retaining talent. And I think that probably comes as no surprise. I'm sure that we all know people in the various industries that we are familiar with, that they've had difficulty attracting employees, retaining employees. And so that continues to be a major concern. I think perhaps even more interesting, though, is when they put together this report, they ask those employers, "What are the shortcomings that you're seeing in your employees?" And if you, you know, it's a very tiny font up here, but among the first five or so categories of that bottom bar graph, about all of them are the four Cs. They're lacking communication skills. They're lacking creativity. They're lacking the critical thinking skills. They have poor work habits and poor work ethic. And so when we focus our work on career preparation and career education, we are trying to meet both of those needs. We're trying to make sure that our students have those soft skills that they need to be successful, because you'll notice that it's way further down the line, the lack of technical skills for that job. Right? Kids can be trained to do all kinds of things, but if they don't come in with the soft skills, skill set, that they need to be successful in any industry, then we haven't done our jobs to prepare them for life after high school. Because ultimately, if our kids are not employable, then we haven't done our job. And so that's really what we're focusing on, is whatever career path a student's going to go into, giving them that experience in middle and high school that prepares them to be successful in whatever it is. Next slide. So I'm going to give just kind of a brief overview of what we currently offer, what programs have grown in the last few years, and then some exciting things that we're looking at for the future. So our current CTE programs, those are Career and Tech Ed programs, these are five programs that are approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the state of Missouri. So that means that these are certified career pathways. We are eligible for grant funding and state funding for these programs. We have very high and growing enrollment in these programs, thanks to the amazing, wonderful teachers that we have who really promote and market these programs. But these programs wouldn't grow if the kids didn't have great experiences in them. And so the students get experiences in these programs that go far beyond just the academic learning. And if you click to the next slide, you'll be able to see a bit of a timeline of where we've been and where we're going. So prior to 2017, we had long had three career and technical education programs, business, marketing, and engineering. They have always been strong. They continue to be strong, very popular programs. In 2017, we brought online our Health Sciences Program, which is our project Lead the Way Biomedical Science Program. It has been hugely popular. I'm very excited to say that in the coming school year, the entry-level course for that program, we will be offering five sections of that course next year because of the high interest that we've had in just the few years that it's been around. In 2020, we decided to merge what were, at that time, four different Career Advisory Councils for each program into one. And I'll talk a little bit more about that Career Advisory Council in the coming slides here. Just this past year, we added our Family and Consumer Science Program as a DUCY-approved program. We had had that FACS program for many, many years, another one that has seen enormous growth. We've gone from, I believe, when I started here, we had, I think, two, maybe three FACS teachers, and we're up to five. So, very popular program, which now is a certified career pathway. And then, we are currently awaiting DUCY approval for our Teaching Careers Program. And so for our CAPS strand that is Teaching Careers and our Cadet Teaching Course, those would fall under that umbrella. And then we are adding to the high school course options, an aviation course, which we hope ultimately could also be a certified career pathway down the road. And then, beyond our CTE programs, we have a lot of other career-based programs, and probably none of these are news to you, but I think they're really exciting, and it's a great opportunity to promote what they are, and to just kind of envision the growth that we could have in these, in the coming years. So these programs, I mentioned the aviation course. We will be offering that next year for the first time. We are offering Aviation 1 as a semester-long course. We kind of anticipated we'd have maybe like 15, 20 kids sign up for that class. We have almost 70 that are going to take our aviation course. And if they then follow that the following school year with Aviation 2, they could finish those two courses with a drone pilot's license, which is really cool. Whether our kids are college-bound or not, that is a skill in high demand right now. So even if they just want to work part-time for Amazon, they can do that. We also continue to participate in the CAPS program. We have annually about 15 or 20 students that choose to go that route. And so, as the, I'll say, host district for that Teaching Careers strand, one of our Lindbergh teachers is the CAPS teacher for that. We hosted at Sappington Elementary. You have heard from our CAPS students before. They were here a few months ago, talking about their great experiences. So, another option for our students. We have our internship course, which this will be the second year that we have the internship course in full swing, and that's for students who really want to look for an internship in any career path that they want. They are solid on their high school credits. They can give up an hour or two of their schedule to get out and do an internship. It's supported by our marketing teacher, and it is a great experience, again, for students who are wanting to enter the world of work. And then, lastly, one that we hope to grow, but we don't currently, we're not active participants yet, St. Louis Community College has put together a pathway for students through their Life Science Program, where our students who are between junior and senior year, they can take a couple of courses over the summer. And then, if they take our dual-credit courses in math and science, they could finish their senior year of high school with a Life Science Lab Assistant Certificate, which allows them to be immediately employable in a Life Science Lab. So that could be through the Danforth Center. That could be through St. Louis Community College. So a great opportunity for our students who see themselves working in that field of biotech and life science, where there are also lots of opportunities to have your employer help pay your college tuition if you're working as a lab tech. So we're really hoping that we will be able to grow that one and get some of our students enrolled there as well. Next slide. And then the final piece of this is, we're trying to make this learning not just for our students, but for our teaching staff as well, because we know that some of the most influential people and the careers that our students choose are going to be the teachers that they had in school. And so the more that our teachers are equipped to talk about possible career paths, the better. Couple of years ago, we instituted a program called the Pathway for Teachers Program. This is funded by a grant from the state of Missouri. We had quarterly visits to various employers. They were theme-based, depending on demands in our area. So we had a finance and banking theme. We had a, you see us in lab coats up there, a biotech theme, one quarter. Unfortunately, we didn't get to do our fourth-quarter visits because of the pandemic, but it was a wonderful experience for our teachers. And so we would go out and do these site visits, and we'd come back and we'd debrief. And it may be like, you know, I spent the morning at a bakery, but you got to talk to the owner of the bakery, and you got to find out what is it, what are the skills they're looking for, and would they be willing to hire teenagers, and bring that back. And we would debrief as a group, and we'd map out, what are professional learning experiences we can provide to our colleagues based on what we learned? How can we introduce these skills into our classroom? And then, how can we just promote career awareness with our students as well? And so we had about, I think, 15 or 20 teachers that were part of that first cohort. We would love to get back to doing this in the coming years. I think it was a really powerful professional learning experience for our teachers, and really expanded their knowledge of the world of work. Again, most of us have only been educators, and so I think to take the time to do our own learning really helps us open the eyes of our students to what's possible. Next slide. And then finally, I mentioned that we had reconstructed our Career Advisory Council. And so these last couple of years, we have grown that group to more than 30 members. We have business partners from around the Lindbergh community. We have a number of administrators, teachers, and students that are part of that career advisory. We spent this year drafting our mission and our vision and our mission, and what are our core values for that group. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that I have the help of two of our fantastic administrators, Dr. Greg Fick and Mr. Patrick Dempsey, that have both helped to support this council and have done a lot of the outreach with various partners. And one thing we did this spring, which I thought was really helpful, is that they invited other districts, other school districts around us, that have had longstanding career education programs or internship programs, and brought them in to talk to us about how they had built their programs, and gave us a lot of wonderful ideas of how we can continue to move forward. Next slide. This is just the product of one of our activities with the Career Advisory Council. I thought it was interesting that of all the conversations we had with students and our business partners, that that key word, exposure, came up over and over again. Because in addition to all those soft skills, it was really, how do we make students know that the work we do exists? That's what employers were looking for, is we do cool stuff and kids don't know anything about it. So that is, has been a part of the vision and the mission, especially from our industry representatives on the council. Next. So where do we go from here? We've got a lot of growth happening. A lot of exciting things are going on. We want to continue to expand our work-based learning experiences for students. We want to get them out into those workplaces and allow them to experience real-life projects and possibilities. We also want to make sure that this is not just a high school initiative. So how do we expand these career exposure opportunities, particularly in middle school, but also there are a lot of elementary opportunities, too. But, you know, how do we, it's a little harder to get middle schoolers out, so how do we bring the outside in for them? And then, continue to grow opportunities for our staff, like that Pathways for Teachers Grant, so that our staff can enhance their own career awareness and then bring that back to the classroom. Thank you. Any questions?
I have one question. When I read the St. Louis Job Support, I noticed that there were a lot of low- and middle-skill jobs that were most prevalent, and especially in nursing and IT. And so that seemed to suggest to me that if we could get our kids exposed to those things, they'll be immediately employable if they want to be. So I think the biomedical stuff is great. And I was curious if there was anything besides, I know the students were helping with the tech support in one of the classes. Is there anything besides that focused on IT, because that's such an area of growth?
That's a great question. So outside of like our typical computer science pathway, we don't, but we do have a couple of connections that we've made this year, because there are a couple of partnership programs in the St. Louis area that will train students in coding. Well, there's a Launch Code for High School, which I know is one thing that we've learned about, and a couple others that will recruit students to learn coding outside of their school day, so that they can put them straight into the workforce upon graduation. So we're exploring some things like that as well.
And if I could add, we've also had conversations with regard to our internship program, how we can do more of that work with our students who are part of Copilot, or maybe are interested in being a part of Copilot, to do some more technology internships within our own technology department. So that's an ever-evolving conversation.
I just had a couple thoughts. Back when I was in high school, which was just about 10 years ago, as everybody knows. And I think this still holds true, but I'm just curious, do we still give them like an assessment to see what career path they may fit into?
We do. So we, through our counselors at middle school and high school, we do have some career interest inventories that our students take. They, I don't know that they take it annually, but I know they take it at least once in high school to help shape some of those decisions. And that information's provided to them as well during that course registration process, that they have some information from that interest inventory. And our counselors have some great graphic organizers that kind of show how that lines up with different course paths that they can choose at the high school.
Okay. And just so you know, people that I work with, who have been in a career for so many years, and they, "Ah, I want to try something different," or they're not sure, we reflect back upon that, and it lines up with where they've headed. So it's very interesting. My other idea is entrepreneurship as one of the next places that maybe we think about in a few years, because there's so many new businesses and so many people who, well, just want to do their own thing.
Definitely, yeah. And I will say, so we have an entrepreneurship course, but also our business and marketing programs are excellent at exposing students to startups. As a matter of fact, our FBLA group, student group, met with, we have a graduate who, she graduated a couple of years ago. She has her own photography company, and she's very successful. And so our students got to meet with her and see, you know, her office space and everything. So when you take 17-year-olds out to meet with someone who's 19, who's doing, you know, doing pretty well for herself with just a high school diploma, those kind of things are happening a lot, and it's fun to see.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Zagora.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We will go to 11.03, Review of Board Policies. Board Policy BDDH-1 is being presented as a first reading and will be brought back at our next regular meeting seeking approval. Contact Brian or I if you have any questions. And there are no other reports this evening, so we will move to 12.0 Citizen Communication Regarding Non-Agenda Items. We have two this evening. So, okay. So I think we usually know the rules, but, you know, be respectful, kind, and courteous, and remain quiet while others are speaking. And we give about three minutes per speaker, and the board will respond in writing after your speaker. Okay. And we will start with Andrea Durway.
Hello. I had the pleasure of attending the Equity and Education Event at Lindbergh High School last month that was planned and executed entirely by CAPS students. They launched the evening by sharing their personal stories of prejudice, racism, bullying, and microaggressions experienced throughout their time in our district. They acknowledged awareness and support have improved over the last few years, but agreed that there is still much work to do. They told us how appreciative they were of the encouragement and care received from teachers and administrators. Representatives from the Gifted Ed Department, WEE Stories, Missouri Equity Education Partnership, and LEED then presented in breakout rooms allowing for Q and A. The program was fantastic. These students are true Lindbergh leaders, intelligent, eloquent, and compassionate problem solvers who displayed outstanding character even when challenged that evening by interlopers who attended not to learn, but to disrupt and interject their political views. In the first breakout session, where young students shared their lived experiences, two women challenged the teens' motives and accused them of being divisive and part of a larger CRT conspiracy. The gaslighting and belligerence displayed towards teenagers and later guest speakers was appalling. Just to reiterate, they badgered minorities and students with learning differences while exhorting the importance of character. It was shameful behavior from adults. Their bigoted and racist views point to exactly why diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts in our district are vital. Voices of marginalized students and of the majority of families who do support DEI are often drowned out by the loud and vocal minority. No more. The parents claiming DEI and SEL are non-important fluff that detract from academics. Research proves otherwise. Results from a landmark analysis that looked across 213 studies with more than 270,000 students found that social-emotional learning interventions increased students' academic performance by 11 percentile points compared to students who did not participate. Bottom line, if children do not feel safe, valued, and included in their school community, academics will suffer. We appreciate Lindbergh's commitment to DEI and SEL and for the addition of DEI Director Dr. Mapp. Parents from neighboring districts were in attendance that night to learn from our example. In spite of the distractions and naysayers, Lindbergh students led the way and were shining examples of what is possible when we listen and learn from all voices and not just the loudest. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Erin Seuss.
Good evening. I am going to be presenting a statement from LEED, the Lindbergh Equity and Diversity Parent Group. Last week, there have been at least two hate crimes in our country that have made the news. In Dallas, an armed gunman shot three Asian Americans, and in Buffalo, a white supremacist killed primarily black citizens who were grocery shopping for their families. So how does this impact Lindbergh? We have a legislature trying to pass policy that forbids teachers from talking about race or gender identity before a certain age in classrooms, even though we have students being bullied every day specifically because of their race, gender, sexual identity, or other cultural factors. We have teachers who feel scared, unsupported... We have teachers who feel scared, unsupported, and unsure of how to address these issues. We cannot, as a district, continue to ignore this untenable situation. We cannot continue to center the comfort of a vocal minority while Lindbergh colleagues, students, families, and community are left feeling unseen, unheard, unsupported, and in pain. While we appreciate the long game of teaching staff and students the importance of dignity and respect, there is immediate work to be done. Our teachers and staff have to be prepared to respond to the bullying happening in our schools now in a way that fully supports and protects kids who are bullied while holding kids who do the bullying accountable. We cannot wait for some abstract point in the future when they are ready. We need administrators and adults in all buildings who are ready now, and we expect staff to be prepared to address bullying holistically, which includes accountability. Our hate speech policies are very much lacking, especially in comparison to districts like Parkway, which both honors diversity and holds kids accountable when they bring harm to others. We want to acknowledge that most kids doing the bullying will, with proper education and parenting, go on to regret and change their words and actions. Some, like the Buffalo shooter, will not, and their prejudice and hate will continue to harm others. At Lindbergh, when a student has shown no growth or change in behavior, these kids are allowed to come back to school like over and over again, creating a harmful, unsafe environment for students and creating this culture, or allowing this culture to persist. However, our district is positioned as a learning institution to work to change this culture, to hold kids accountable in a caring but firm way when needed. We want a zero-tolerance policy for hate-related taunting and bullying. It is important on this path to recognize that racism still exists and to acknowledge that there's white supremacy behind some of these tragedies. We want to celebrate our cultural differences every day so that we can honor the amazing contributions of all Americans and affirm our kids' rich and varying traditions. All children should be, feel safe, celebrate, and value in our school walls, free from bigotry. And our integrity as a community and our responsibility to raise empathetic, collaborative, kind adults depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, we will respond in writing in the next few days. Thank you. All right, we have already conducted our executive session, so there is no need. We will move to 15.0, Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Meeting 1554? Motion by Kristi, second by Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Board Meeting 1554 is adjourned.